Good evening, everyone. Those of you here in the room with us, those watching on livestream on the library channel, and those who will be watching a recording of this, which will be playing on the library channel and City Channel 4 a couple of days after this recording, which is May 20th, so hopefully by Thursday or so, we will have that recording up on the library channel, City Channel 4, Sierra Club Facebook page, and I think the 100 Grannies Facebook page, we can put it up there as well. We want to welcome you to this environmental forum. We are asking questions mostly about the environment, but some other topics as well. And we have two hosts tonight. My name is Tom Karsner. I'm representing the Iowa City area group of the Sierra Club. And Deb Schloerman, you'll meet her in just a minute or two here. She is representing the 100 Grannies. And we are glad that you can join us. And also to let you know, there will be one more forum, for those of you who are live watching in person or livestream. The Legal Women Voters will be having their forum tomorrow night, Tuesday, the 21st, at 7:00 at the Senior Center. So you can tune in there as well. So the election for, the primary election for this group of candidates is June 4th. And in the Democratic Party primary, they will select, voters will select three candidates to move on as the party nominee to the November general election ballot. So supervisors have, there are five seats on the Board of Supervisors. Three seats are up this year. Three are of the candidates, which I'll introduce in a moment, our incumbents, and two are challengers. Early voting has already started at the county auditor's office from 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. weekdays, but there's a little bit of a hitch. The administration building down on South Dubuque Street, where you are probably accustomed to voting, is under renovation. So the auditor's office and early voting has consequently moved one block north to the Health and Human Services Administration Building on the third floor. So there are some signs down there that point you to where early voting is, but just as a reminder, it's not the usual place. So you'll have to make that adjustment if you want to vote early. This forum, like I said, will be available on the library's YouTube channel and City Channel 4. So let's cover a couple of ground rules for tonight's forum. We have the five candidates here. There will be opening statements of 60 seconds in a, and we'll be doing questions in a round robin format. You'll see it. The candidates, I think, are used to it as well. And after each candidate has had a chance to answer the question, we'll have a period of what I call rebuttal, where a candidate can, if they choose, add something to their comment, comment on something that someone else said, or ask a question of another candidate if they want. And we'll continue that for as long as we stay on topic, and as long as no candidate is devouring the bulk of the time. And that'll be up to the discretion of myself and Deb as the moderators. And then we'll also have closing statements of 60 seconds. So before we get to the opening statements, I just want to introduce the candidates, one by one, going down the table in the order. Bob Conrad is one of the challengers. Mandy Remington is also a challenger. Royce Ann Porter is one of the incumbents. Lisa Green Douglas is also an incumbent, serving on the board presently, as is Rod Sullivan. He is an incumbent candidate as well. So let's go ahead with opening statements, and I'm gonna hand it over to Deb Schloerman to lead us for at least the opening statements.
Okay. So what we're gonna try to do is go in, we call this rotating order, so Bob can start this time, and then the question, then Mandy can start. We'll do this rotating order. So go ahead with your introductions, please.
All right. Thank you. Well, thanks for showing up. And I think this is a great process to get to know all the candidates, the incumbents, and, because your vote does matter. You know, no matter who you vote for, getting out June 4th is very important, and I think that shows by the interaction, at least I've had as I've been running. So just real quick, a little bit about me. Bob Conrad, I grew up in western Iowa, came off of a century farm, and kinda had a passion and love for farming. My father was a small farmer, said, "Go do something else." So I ended up going to college, became a state trooper. I've been a state trooper for about 34, going on 35 years. Done several different things there. I'm a public resource officer, which is kind of a title that allows us to go out in the community and talk to people, educate people, give training, build that community trust. Also a crisis negotiator, peer support leader, so I understand some other resources that are available for us. I've been a union director for 28 years. I've been on the union for 35 years. I see a lot of value to that. It brings me a lot of joy to represent the people that I do, and go through that, negotiate contracts, ratify them, things like that. I also decided at one point, when I had a tough time finding childcare, that I was able to, with a partner, open a childcare business that actually, we employ 50-some people, and we have about 174 kids right now on census, and it's been a great love of ours. It's been a quality daycare center. I've had a lot of people compliment it, that we've done a good job at it. And probably the biggest compliment is when a 25-year-old comes up and says, "I want to retire here." But I have a lot of interest in a lot of things that I can do in this county, if you like me.
Thank you all for being here, and thank you to the Sierra Club and 100 Grannies for organizing. My name is Mandy Remington. I have lived in Johnson County since I was 14-years-old. I have rented in Johnson County since I was 17. I have been raising children in Johnson County since I was 20. I've worked at the University of Iowa for 18-years, and about five-years ago, I founded the Corridor Community Action Network, which provides amplification and ancillary support for over 100 organizations serving the corridor. And I'm also a domestic violence survivor and a single parent, who is bringing a perspective of what it's like to really struggle to raise a family on one income in our county that's been missing from our local government for a very long time. I would really appreciate your vote, honor, before June 4th. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Royce Ann Porter, and I reside in Iowa City, and I have been a proud resident of Johnson County for over 30-years. I currently serve as a Johnson County Supervisor. It has been my honor and privilege to serve as your Johnson County Supervisor for the past five-and-a-half-years. Together, we've achieved milestones and progress that make our community stronger and more resilient. I am proud to have been the first African-American elected to a county seat in Johnson County, and the first to serve as Chair. I am running for reelection, because I am deeply committed to building on the progress we have made, and continuing to serve the residents of Johnson County. As the first African-American elected to a county seat in Johnson County, I have worked tirelessly to address the needs of our community and advocate for positive change. During my time in office, I have fought for affordable housing, mental health services, and the rights of marginalized communities. I believe that there is still much work to be done, and I am dedicated to continuing this important work for the betterment of our county. I am proud of the accomplishments we have achieved together, but there is still more to do. I am running for reelection to ensure our county government remains responsive, inclusive, and accountable to all residents. Together, we can continue to make Johnson County a place where everyone has the opportunity to thrive and succeed. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Lisa Green Douglas. I've been a registered Democrat since I could first register at age 18. It was a presidential election year, but my birthday's in December, so I didn't get to it in that election. My husband and I moved to Madison Township in 1986, but I've lived in Johnson County since 1980. We've kinda created this little wildlife habitat. We've got dozens of species of birds on our property, and most recently, a pair of Cooper Hawks, which has been fun to watch and listen to. Since I've been on the board, I've been really proud of the work I've done, especially in three arenas. And one of those arenas is in mental health care provision, affordability, filling the gaps in the system, and continuing to look to see where those gaps are, and how we can best fill them, so that all people can receive services that they need. I was instrumental in the idea of, not initiating the idea, but working on Guidelink Center, which is our mental health access center. I'm very proud of that. I've also been a very loud advocate for conservation initiatives. I'm the board liaison to the Conservation Department. I support their efforts to increase habitat, and, okay, and then my other arena is working families, and finding ways to increase housing, childcare options, and jobs. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Rod Sullivan. I'm an incumbent member of the Board of Supervisors. I grew up on a farm that's been in my family now for over 175-years, up near the Sutliffe Bridge. I came to the University of Iowa. I've worked in the field of human services in several different positions. I am married to Dr. Melissa Fath, who's a cancer researcher at the University of Iowa. Together, we have three children, one grandchild, and we served as foster parents to over 50 different children over the time that we did that. I'm a member of several community organizations, including St. Andrew Presbyterian Church, AFT Local 716, the Iowa City Federation of Labor. I served four-years as the Chair of the Johnson County Democratic Party some years ago. I'm proud of the accomplishments that I've had in my years on the board, and one of the ones I'm looking forward to speaking about most is the passage of the Conservation Bond back in 2008, which is one of the things of which I'm most proud, and so look forward to speaking with you about that and more tonight. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And speaking of that Conservation Bond, you recently announced the second Conservation Bond, asking for $30-million. Currently, property owners are paying about $10 for $100,000 of property value. When and if it passes, if and when it passes, the first property year owners will pay about $15 for $100,000. I understand that's gonna fluctuate, but do you tell us, do you support the bond proposal? What would you do to help it pass? And what kind of projects are the best use of the money? We'll start with Mandy.
It's kind of interesting that you bring up housing tax costs in the question, because as that would fund it, I'm also really interested in the idea of combining, I do support the bond, first off, I do support it, and I would do a lot of outreach to community members to explain the benefit of it, and why I think that they should vote for it. But also, I'm really interested in the idea of combining that funding with the IRA, because if it is used for an affordable housing project that meets certain requirements for environmental sustainability and for labor, then we actually can get most of that money back at the end of the tax cycle, and reinvest it into ongoing projects, and create a fund for our environment that is kind of like our community housing funds, that reinvest their own money.
Yes, I support the bond, and it, from just having a meeting, and what we passed on last week was $5 per $100,000. What would we do to help it pass? I would continue to just reach out to people, because I've been questioned, I had a question just on Saturday at the farmer's market, like, "Why would you pass this bond and not a county jail, when we need a county jail, and you're asking for a bond?" So these are things that the public need to know. I know that we're reaching back from 2008, when this all started, so as the funds is running out, they have literally, looking at the $30,000, it's $17,000, I mean, it's 30-million. $17-million is from grants, so it isn't all just, all money. Money has been raised for this, and yes, I do support it.
I also support this bond. Was pretty excited to announce the rollout of that this past week. The main purpose of the bond is so that we can acquire lands and have areas where we can do projects that will increase the soil health, the water quality, the air quality, protect certain habitats, and create more. A few of the past projects that have been done with the last bond have done just that at Cedar River Crossing near Sutliffe. What was formerly farmland has a wetland that is there, and it's a great place when the birds are migrating, to come in and see especially waterfowl, and a variety of them. And that was like, there was a channel cut from the farm that was dumping into the river. So now that is not that way anymore, so it has done what we intended it to do. There are other areas that have been acquired that have very particular flora that has been protected, and at Kent Park, the increase of prairies has increased the soil health, and therefore, the water health. So I am very much in support of this.
Yes, I'm very much in support of the bond. As I mentioned, I think, earlier, I was the person to either blame or give credit to for the first one. I sat down with our former Conservation Director, Harry Graves, at the Hamburg Inn in 2006, and we said, "What can we do here?" And I said, "Let's just bond for it, Harry," and the rest was history. But we literally, on the back of a napkin, sketched out how much money we thought we might need, and what we could do with it. And I think the results have been really true to that original meeting. Harry said, you know, and he's the expert, I mean, he's the Conservation Director at the time, he said, "There are, there are lands in this county that if we don't protect them now, they're gonna go away, and they will never be replaced." There are unique features in some places, and so that's what we focused on, is trying to protect those unique features that don't exist anyplace else, maybe in the county, maybe in this part of the state. And so we try to protect those. We've also done a lot with trails. We've done a lot with trying to create corridors for wildlife, to buffer already-existing large wildlife areas, and I'm really excited about the potential for another Conservation Bond.
All right. Well, I appreciate conservation a lot, and I look back at our family farm. We had ground that was actually called sod busting ground, which means it never had been turned over. And so I think having ground that you can protect like that, that buffers creeks, that buffers stuff like that, is very important. I think, when you look at Johnson County, they are a leader in conservation areas. When you look at the parks that are out there, you look at the trails that we have and stuff like that, that didn't happen by chance. So that happens through bonds like this. I've been talking to several different people, just about this kind of stuff. One thing I think we need to do, some complaints I heard, is we haven't been taking care of the parks that we have, to make them better, to keep, I'm hearing about poison ivy on trails and stuff like that. So if we can use part of this bond to help take care of the stuff we already have, and make it better, and improve that, besides purchasing other ground, I think that's very important. Talking to people about transparency, I think it's very important that we try and identify properties, just not buy stuff without talking to the public first, and getting public input is huge, right? So they're gonna support what they're part of, and what they've been asked about. So I think transparency is great with these projects. I think, you know, we don't want to have more loss of trust in politics, so.
Okay, thank you. The Inflation Reduction Act has created multiple tax credits for electrifying residential homes. Tax credits are sometimes out of reach for middle and lower, and lower-income households, but the IRA also provides states with money to provide point-of-sale rebates for many of the same purchases and projects. For example, $840 for an electric stove, $1,750 for a heat pump water heater, and $8,000 for a heat pump for HVAC system. But the state of Iowa is dragging its feet, and not made these available yet. Do you see ways that the county can piggyback on this federal electrification program through additional financial incentives, or changing construction codes to require more electric appliances, as other cities and counties across America have done? Start with Royce Ann.
Absolutely. We are participating in the IRA Climate Pollution Reduction Grant Planning, cities and other counties, with cities and other counties in eastern Iowa, and our staffs are figuring out best ways to help people leverage other opportunities of the Inflation Reduction Act. The CPRG preliminary plan was submitted in March, and the comprehensive planning will begin later this year.
Yeah, I think that there are ways that we can work with the federal program, and, or complement, maybe not work with it, but complement it and enhance it locally. We can always go above and beyond, and provide incentives to developers that would, and you can combine it with the pollution reduction measures and affordable tax credits. And I would like that to happen, and extend the sunset on those, so that it's not just there to get these buildings built, and then goes away in five-years. I think that, you know, a generation at least. So I'm excited to see all of the possibilities, but that's one way, and I think that we can certainly do it.
Just in the last 10-days, I've been to two trainings on the Inflation Reduction Act, and all the different things that we can and can't do with IRA money. And it is frustrating, I will say, to be in a state with a conservative governor and legislature, because it really does limit our ability to do certain things. But there are things we can do, and I think we're committed to doing all the things we can. One of the biggest things right now is really educating ourselves, and particularly educating our staff, on exactly what we can and can't do. It's a very large and complex piece of legislation that goes a lot of different directions, and so I think it would be unwise for any of us to talk about what we will or won't do, when we really don't know enough about it yet. I do know that even prior to this coming out, Johnson County's done a lot of innovative stuff in terms of large-group solar buys, that help drive down the cost for individual homeowners who wanted to participate. We've done that at least twice. The first one, we did ourselves, the second one, we actually did cooperatively with Lynn County, and got an even better rate. So I think you can expect us to do more of that in the future.
Good. So when you, when you look at sustainable energy, is really what we're trying to accomplish, right? How do we get that? It's through the wind, through the solar, and the appliances that benefit that. And so I think education is a huge piece of that. You still talk to people that don't understand solar. I've been fortunate that I have a friend that has talked to me a lot about solar, and I've actually probably talked about three or four residents into putting solar on, and just one at a graduation two-days ago. And they've already made an appointment with, which I recommended. And so when you look at that, and you look at the ways that we can save our environment, help climate control, that's a big part of it, is getting the equipment that works with that, not looking for the gas appliances and stuff like that. You know, when you talk about legislators, and unfortunately, our government, and the governor, and the restraints that are being put on us by the laws, you have to, you have to make them uncomfortable. You have to call them, you have to get in their face. As a union person, I have done that for years, been to the Capitol, politic for that, made them understand that we're not going away. And so these laws, they, the one thing you can do that is by voting, right? Like we talked about first, June 4th, getting out there, we can vote them out, if they're not gonna do what we ask them to do. And so I think that's a huge part of it. The board constantly needs to look for grants, we need to look for ways to bring more money into this county, to offer the programs that we're talking about here, get those tax incentives, and get the tax credits, and again, make them bigger tax credits, right? So I think it's very important to look at that. As a Board Supervisor, I commit to doing that.
I'm trying to remember all the different pieces of that question, because there were multiple pieces, but I do support regulations requiring that any new developments are environmentally up to par. And also, not only incentivizing developers, but, and homeowners that live in their homes, but also incentivizing landlords is going to be an important piece of this, because a lot of the landlords in Johnson County will replace appliances with whatever the cheapest appliance that they can get is. And a lot of the homes in Johnson County are rental homes, so we really have to be considering the landlords when we are talking about these things as well. And then also, yes, anything that we can do to incentivize people is always good, but also, we can also reach out to other counties, and we can ask other counties to make statements to the state with us, as far as those federal dollars that are not being made available to us due to the state. There's a lot of state-level advocacy that can be done, especially in partnership with other large counties.
I'd like to say something.
Yeah, yeah, please.
As the liaison with PDS, I've had, I sat down with Josh and had a conversation with him, and he did let me know that the IRA Climate Pollution Reduction Grant Planning is with ECI, COGS, cities, and other counties in eastern Iowa. So they are collaborating, and they're coming together to do this.
Yeah, that's awesome.
It's being done.
That's awesome. I would just also like to see formal statements and advocacy at the state legislative level.
Absolutely, yes.
Are there any other comments on that one? Okay.
This spring, the Iowa City City Council approved the industrial rezoning of the former Kirkwood Community College property on Lower Muscatine Avenue, bought by Procter &amp; Gamble. Much of the debate there centered on health effects of chemical emissions from the existing P&amp;G plant, plus other industrial plants further to the east, out on Lower Muscatine Avenue, and I guess really out on Highway 6 as well. And Mazaher Saleh, our city councillor, is here with us tonight. She made a great statement. She noted that when those plants were built, even before I was born, that was the edge of the city. That's where the city limits stopped, and the city has grown around those areas, so we have industrial plants right next to residential, you know, people living in residential housing. So the question is, could, should, the county and the city jointly help lessen this problem of chemical emissions in the future by promoting or incentivizing the location of new industrial operations out in the county, further east, away from residential areas, still close to the rail lines that are important to the industrial park, and close to Highway 6, and the interstate access that is really helpful for the existing industrial plants out there? But can there be some means of cooperation to help alleviate this problem, and take the chemical emissions further out into the county? I believe, Lisa, you're first on this one.
Yeah. Thank you, Tom. That's a great question. I think that oftentimes, we see the placement of all kinds of things with emissions, or dangerous problems located near places where people don't have great large incomes. The opposite was the case here. I think it is really incumbent upon people who are building homes to let the buyers beware, and let them know what the nearby zoning is. And the buyers need, you know, they need to do that, too. We've got places out in the county where people are complaining about certain industrial zoning things, but it was all zoned industrial, light industrial. So yes, I think we can, the first question was, "Could we?" Yes, we can. Should we? Perhaps we should. I think, again, it would take an education on what the zoning is, and then perhaps rezoning is, is, you know, warranted there. But we do have places out in the county, they're farther out for a reason, currently. But just so people know, cities have home rule when it comes to annexation, too, so that often happens, and the annexation is very often for residential purposes.
Rod?
Yeah, I mean, I think it's real easy to, in a vacuum, say, "Well, I would do this." It's really important for people to understand, in real life here, the city council made this decision, and the Board of Supervisors has no input whatsoever. Now, can we cajole them? Sure, we can if we want to. You mentioned Mazaher. It just so happened, I sent her a text yesterday, and I just sent an email to the whole council today. So it's not like we don't communicate with those folks, but the board didn't have anything to do with this decision. There is industrial-zoned land, a little farther east in Iowa City. Tom, you mentioned on the rail line. One of the things that you have to think about is that industrial users often need good sewage disposal, and good access to water, good access to power. That is not always available out in the middle of the country, and they have to have that to be successful. So they're gonna be looking at cities, they're gonna be looking at developed, or, you know, industrial parks, where they have the things they need. We have a few of those spaces in the county. More of those places are on the edges of cities. And so I guess, I just want to point out that it's not a super-easy answer. I think it's real easy to I think it's real easy to give a quick answer, but in truth, it's more difficult than that. We need industrial jobs. We need industrial, there's certain industry that takes away our waste, for example. You know, you have to do something with that. So you can't just say, no industrial. You just have to be careful about how, where, when, all that stuff.
Okay, so one of the things that I've done really well in my career is building relationships. And it's important to build relationships, just not at a certain time of the year. It's time to build them all year long, and it's to get those relationships. So when I see that building that is out there, that's a beautiful building that should not be going to a production facility, it should be used for something else, I think having those relationships, seeing that coming, right? It didn't just happen. Being informed and talking to the city is a big part of that. Talking to the city leaders, the people that have that knowledge so we can do something together. And you've got to talk to P&amp;G as well, right? They provide a lot of jobs for this community, and a lot of people depend on them. So I think you've got to build those relationships. And it's something I'm really good at and I'm comfortable doing. I'm not afraid of going in and being told no, and I'll go back and be told no again, and that's fine. I think it's also important to be an advocate for that. And if you get, again, education is a big piece of this, right? What you don't know, you can't stop, and you can't affect, or you can't change. So I definitely would be a big advocate for that. I sat on planning a zoning. And when I sat on planning zoning for Johnson County, a lot of things we did was with zoning requirements. And that can be used to a benefit and achieve certain results. And that can be done with the city. I understand it's a partnership, but partnerships is where you get along. Partnerships is where you build. So you have a common goal. The city and the county have some commonalities. They're governments that want to take care of the people, or they should want to take care of the people, and that's why I want to be a supervisor.
I was directly involved in some of the advocacy against that rezoning. I worked with a woman named Anne Marie. We were contacted actually by a national organization, the National Rainforest Alliance, who wanted to help us because they had some concerns because of just really awful things with P&amp;G that I didn't even know about. As somebody who lives .7 miles from the factory and is in that one-mile danger zone where there's increased number of pollutants, I was concerned about the immediate health impact of me and my children, who do have autoimmune disorders as well. But I also found out a lot of other things about P&amp;G. But ultimately, yes, I do think city governments and county governments and state governments should always be working together to do what they can that is best for the people that they mutually oversee. That should always be happening in every topic that we're discussing that overlaps. Sorry, I also want to say, I guess, I do think that it is important to keep industrial away from residential, but also, we still have to be careful about not encroaching on our natural spaces as well. That's going to be, that's a balance that needs to be made because we already have major issues with chemical runoff and things like that, and we want to maintain and save our natural spaces.
Okay. I do want to echo off of what Rod said when it comes to county and city rezonings by the cities. We don't have anything, and we did not have anything to do with that. But when I did, I was reached out by some concerned citizens in the neighborhood because I live over there, too, right off of Highway 6. And the ladies came and talked to me about it and the pollutants in the air, they was worried about that. I literally went to the city council meeting, and I sat there for four hours. I sat there because I was just trying to see what had happened. The rezoning had already been done. The part that hurts me is today when I drive past Kirkwood and see that half of it is torn down, broke my heart because I have two degrees from Kirkwood. That was a beautiful facility, and I know that it could have been used for something else. By far as you saying partnerships with the city and county, we have a great, we do, we collaborate. We have a great relationship with them. But that had already been done. And truly, I did not know about it until those ladies came to me and told me what was going on. I didn't know anything about what the city was doing because I'm concerned about what the county is doing. I didn't, I had no idea until they told me. But I did go there, and I did go there to listen, and I sat there with the people. And I just felt like it was something else that we could have done. I really do.
Further comments? Sure, this is rebuttal.
All right. And I'm not trying to rebut what anybody has said, but just kind of add to the information that's out there. So our comprehensive plan has one, you know, portion of it that does address land use, and it goes into a lot of the things about zoning and all of that. And within our comprehensive plan, we have fringe area agreements with most of the cities. And so that, Bob, when you mentioned that, you know, working with cities and such, we kind of do it in anticipation. So we do have in place how they want to and how we want to see those, that two-mile buffer, how that might get filled in and in what way, and what kind of regulations do we want to have on that. But one area I wanted to mention, you all know this part. If you head up 965 and 120th Street, where you go one way and it's Swisher, and you go the other way and it's Shuville, and you go straight ahead and you hit Lynn County, there's a lot of development going on right there. And we do have highway commercial there. We have light industrial there on the other side of the street. And Cedar Rapids did provide some water to one of the areas, which helps with the success of industry to have that kind of availability of water. But that area is going to be changing so fast, you might lose your breath just trying to figure out what's happening where and who we need to keep up with. So I just wanted to put that out there, that those agreements are already in place, and then we can, you know, tweak them.
Are there other comments?
Yeah, I have one, if Rod doesn't, everything. You know, I get the work with the cities already. I just know in certain circumstances, I'll use one example, some employment had changed at the city, and it was in their planning and zoning department. And I talked to them, and they had no idea of the 20-year plan. We started talking about what the county had in place and roads like Oakdale Extension, stuff like that. And by having those conversations and keeping them open and showing up on days that it's not a topic, I have built relationships that I think can hopefully stop some of this stuff or maybe make some changes that I can get involved sooner than later, and we can make that difference. That's my plan, so.
Anyone else last call?
And once again, I'd just like to specifically say that we have a PDS department that does that. We don't have to ask, you know, we get involved with, like I said, the women came to me, I got involved, but the PDS department does do that type of work when it comes to rezoning and zoning.
I plan on being active with the PDS department just so I know they're doing their job. I'm not going to micromanage them.
You can't plan it, you have to be. We are liaisons, you're going to be. Once you're a supervisor, you are going to be.
But I'm going to also follow up and make sure that they're not missing something.
Okay, gotcha.
So I'm going to be part of that.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Planning development and sustainability.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. The National Sierra Club has significantly increased its focus on diversity, equity, and inclusion issues, especially since Me Too and Black Lives Matter. Iowa City, Johnson County, and the state of Iowa have wrestled with its own human rights concerns regarding the Truth and Reconciliation Commission, LGBTQ+ rights, indigenous and immigrant rights, the Excluded Workers Fund, and most recently, the formation of the Transgender Advisory Board. With all those things in mind, the question is, is the county doing enough to promote and protect civil and human rights, especially for those in protected classes? And if not, what more can or should the county do? And Rod, you're first.
Okay. Thank you. I think that the Sierra Club is right to notice this because, you know, traditionally, I would add another caveat. I think traditionally, the environmental dangers are usually highest to the poorest people. There's a tendency to, you know, they drive the interstates through or they put the polluters where the poorest people tend to live. There's just not as much opposition because those people can't hire expensive lawyers and all that stuff. So that's sort of the first part of your question. The second part, oh, I should probably mention, too, I've been a Sierra Club member for 34 years. I didn't mention that, but I'm not a granny. But I do think that...
He is a grandpa.
Yeah, I'm a grandpa. I do think that the county recognizes that there is a lot of work to do on all those things that you mentioned. Any type of marginalized group, I mean, it's in the name. They're marginalized somehow, some way, maybe many ways. And so we need to make sure we're doing what we can to reduce that marginalization and to try to create a fair and equal and level playing field for everybody. One of the things I'm really proud of, one of my accomplishments in office is, when I first ran for office, I ran on the idea of a human rights ordinance for Johnson County. And we did pass that ordinance. We're the very first county in Iowa to pass one, actually, back in 2006. And that ordinance was actually forward-looking enough to include trans rights at the time. Now, it's been 20 years, and we need to dust it off and update it a little, but it's a good piece of work.
Well, Johnson County has a human rights ordinance, which I think is excellent, but it can always be improved, right? As you move forward, as you have those situations come up, you have to address those. Education is a big piece of that as well. And I don't need to keep beating that drum, but I think education and letting people know what their rights are, letting them know there's an outlet to come to. You've seen people come to the board of supervisor meetings and express their concerns and their interests. That's what we need to have for that transparency. We need to have some open forums, just like this, right? Okay, today is the safe space that we come into, and we talk about what you're seeing wrong, what you're seeing going right. I don't always just, it's not always wrong. We have a lot of right in this county as well. And so we need to look at that as well. So I think when you look at that, then we can make improvements based on what we're hearing. We need to get people involved. We need to get the specialists involved, the people that have plans. And as was mentioned earlier, that look at other counties, look at other areas and see what they've done. We don't always have to reinvent the wheel, see what worked in certain places. So I'm committed to that as well.
Before we go on, Tom, can you repeat the question portion of it again?
I'll repeat it when it comes to you, unless someone else wants it.
I do not think that the county is doing everything that it could be doing to protect civil rights in the increasingly authoritarian state that we are living in at this point in time. There's currently a lawsuit that is against the state for the anti-immigration, well, there are multiple lawsuits against the state for the anti-immigration legislation that was just passed. Johnson County could join that lawsuit. That is something that we could be discussing with our legal team. Also, I am a member of the newly-formed Johnson County Advisory Task Force. I'm really excited about the work that's going to be done there. I was also part of the Excluded Worker Fund organizers. I worked through my role as the founder and director of Corridor Community Action Network very closely with Catholic Worker House during that time and advocated very strongly for that. I believe Royce Ann Porter and Lisa Green Douglas both voted against that excluded worker fund. But yeah, I think that there is a lot of state-level advocacy in particular that we can be doing, and a lot that we can be doing to ensure that our residents are protected regardless of what's happening at the state to the best of our ability.
Before I answer, can I do a rebuttal or do anything?
No. Answer the question. You get 60 seconds, and then there's rebuttal.
Oh, okay. I'll answer the question first. Far as continuing support for marginalized communities, I got down advocacy and representation. Ensure that the concerns and perspectives of marginalized communities are heard and valued in county decision-making processes. Work to address systemic barriers and inequities faced by marginalized populations, advocating for policies and programs that promote fairness and justice. Expand access to services. Ensure that county services, including healthcare, education, and social support, are accessible to all residents regardless of background or identity. And then the last one, because I know my 60 seconds will be open, is just social justice and equity initiatives. Support community organizations. Provide funding and resources to community organizations that work to advance social justice, equity, and inclusion for marginalized groups. Advocate for policies and legislation at the local and state levels that promote social justice, equity, and human rights for all residents. By continuing to prioritize and support marginalized communities, we can create a more inclusive and equitable Johnson County where everyone has the opportunity to thrive and succeed.
Lisa?
So I think, can you repeat the question now?
Okay. The National Sierra Club has significantly increased its focus on diversity, equity...
Just the question part.
Oh.
Yeah.
Is the county doing enough to promote and protect civil and human rights, especially for protected classes? If not, what more should it do?
Okay, so that's a yes/no question. So the answer's no. But the other part of that is that we are doing things. Royce Ann just gave you a lot of issues where we are, in fact, doing things to promote social, racial, economic, housing, justice. Can we do more? We always can do more. And we have been responsive, maybe not as fast as people want, but we have been responsive when people have come forward saying, you know, there's no access for us, for this particular group, to this particular thing. And we feel further barriers put in front of us. The formation of the Trans Advisory Group is one such example of that. And no, we didn't do it the first time. I needed more information. I asked lots of questions. That's how I process new information. And so we are looking forward to hearing from that advisory group to see ways that we can, in fact, address some of the barriers that they've faced, just as we have with other marginalized groups. So yes, we can always do more.
Are there further comments?
Yeah. Just that, pointing out, thank you very much, Mandy, that we didn't vote for the, what did you call it?
The Excluded Workers.
The Excluded Workers Fund. Okay, so just going back a little bit, I want to say that there was always this idea that there was such a fund. This, I was on the initial ARPA leadership team where we were just processing the rules that were coming out from the US Treasury that were changing constantly and trying to see what are allowable areas. And in fact, if we had done just excluded workers, there would have been, you can't give the money directly to the workers. You would have to give it to their employer by law, by the guidelines of the US Treasury. And that is why we didn't make that the gateway entry point for those monies. Instead, you can do qualified census tract type gateway question. So we did it based on income. And the margin that we used for that, in fact, was, was, it included many, many excluded workers. But to talk about, we voted against an excluded workers fund. There was no such fund. I mean, there might have been people who were excluded workers, but there was no pot of money that was an excluded workers fund. We had to work within the constraints of the law, and we did that. And by doing it the way we did, we made it very ample and included.
Are there further comments?
Absolutely. She made the statement that us two voted against it. There wasn't an against it, it was with the ARPA dollars that we used. And this was during the pandemic. During the pandemic, we had a lot of people that was affected, not just excluded workers. And when the excluded workers, or you and the Catholic workers came to us, you were literally demanding us to give money to excluded workers only, when we had a whole county of people who were in need. And that's who we gave the money to. And in order for you to be able to get that $1,400 that we gave out, you had to qualify.
Yes, and that lottery allowed folks who had already received pandemic emergency assistance from the federal government to receive it, instead of making sure that it went to folks who had not already received federal assistance money for the pandemic from the federal government. The point of the proposed, yes, I know there wasn't one, that's why I said voted against creating one. The point of the proposed Excluded Workers Fund was to ensure that those who had not already received assistance for the pandemic from the government had access to some.
And while that might be true, there were, oh gosh, I better stop.
Any further comments?
Okay. Confined animal feeding operations, or CAFOs, as they're often called, and ethanol production in Iowa can be seen as only marginally reducing carbon at best, but bringing significant damage to our public health, especially in higher cancer rates. Many controls over these industries have been taken away from the county, but regardless of jurisdiction, what stand do you take to stop the state from being strangled by these industries? What ideas do you have for what the county can do to promote clean water, clean air, and decreasing carbon emissions?
So with the CAFOs, confined animal production facilities is what basically that means. When you look at those, it's easy to tell that it's affecting property values. It's easier to affect the air quality, right? It's hurting the air quality. And when, and there wasn't a CAFO that did that, but when you looked at the Nishna Batna River, and they lay out the valve hoop, and it kills 750,000 fish. And then there's a question whether we can sue them or can get enough against them. Those are issues, right? So when you look at the EPA and the federal guidelines, the number of years they came back, I think it was in the early 2000s, mid-2000s, and jumped the DNR about not being up to speed on stuff, allowing stuff to happen. We see that happening with the governor we have now, right? And so how she's pushing that, I think we have to keep DNR right on center, focus, and target, and say, you're not doing enough. I think, I grew up on a small farm with a small cattle operation. We had about 20 cows, and we did it the old-fashioned way, which turns out to be the best way, to have them on grass, to keep them out of the creek. And where's, I had a pump, and we pumped water for them. And so, and the carbon emission pipelines are not a good thing either. They hurt the farmers and the people. So, anyway.
I'm a member of IOSSCRI largely because of their work against CAFOs and pipelines and things like that. I attend every one of their events that I'm able to. I'm really glad that they recently started a Southeast Iowa group. I do support a factory farm moratorium. I think that that's something that the county should, again, make statements to the state about. And I think that the quickest way for us to reduce our carbon emissions would be to get our five coal plants closed. Well, five owned by Mid-America, and then one owned by the University of Iowa, which, again, is out of the jurisdiction of the county, but that does not mean that the county, particularly with Mid-America as one of the largest users of Mid-American energy, cannot create pressure and influence to get those coal plants closed.
Is now an okay time for part of the rebuttal?
Let's let everybody answer first.
Okay.
Okay. Protecting the environment and addressing climate change are growing concerns for Johnson County. Strategies to reduce carbon emissions, conserve natural resources, and promote renewable energy are essential for mitigating the impacts of climate change and preserving the county's natural beauty. When I say Johnson County, when I say we, I mean Johnson County. We just updated our comprehensive plan and strengthened our commitment to the sustainability in it. The update adds new key issues of resiliency and also equity and opportunity. We also added two new priorities to the sustainability chapter, which is climate change mitigation, adaptation, and action. And the second one is potable water resources. This has a new related goal because having enough clean drinking water for everyone in our county is essential. We added some new strategies that should, for example, help effectively preserve sensitive areas and maintain stormwater. Other new strategies and actions relate to balancing the need for renewable energy, especially solar, with farmland protection. And these are things that we are already doing here in Johnson County.
When, in addressing CAFOs, we tried many things, and we were successful for a short amount of time. We did have a moratorium on building new CAFOs and the expansion of current CAFOs. The state legislature took that ability away from us. We then tried to, within our comprehensive plan, redefine CAFOs as industry as opposed to agriculture. And the reason for that is because counties do not have any purview in agricultural things. That is a state purview topic. And so we defined it as industry, and boy, the next day, there was legislation passed that didn't even go to committee. It was passed that counties could not do that, that this is, in fact, CAFOs are, in fact, animal agriculture. So I'm really all for doing whatever we can. We could not even require people building new CAFOs or expanding their CAFOs to have to go through the public hearing process that everybody else who does any kind of building has to do. So the state was swift in there, taking away any authority or purview we had on CAFOs. I'm ready to hear your great ideas, though, if you have them.
Well, so I think the answer's real simple here, actually. It's solar. You know, we need to electrify our vehicles, and we need to, you know, create that electricity using solar energy. Johnson County has what I really think are state-of-the-art wind and solar policies at the county level. They've won awards, and they are being copied throughout the Midwest. We're not a great place for wind necessarily in Johnson County, but solar you can do almost any place. And we've had a couple really nice winds recently. There's a project going up on Highway 22 between Lone Tree, pretty close to River Junction, if you know where that is. And it's 40 acres, and I think it's going to provide enough electricity to power basically the city of Corville or North Liberty, just on 40 acres. So you start to think about what we could do statewide if you took 40 acres for every city like that. It doesn't take very long before you're producing all our power, and we could do that. The other great thing about that is solar energy does not damage the land. There's no concrete base to these. It's just a steel pole that goes down in. They can pull it right back up. The ground actually heals itself while it's in prairie underneath that. You're not using all the water. Ethanol is not good for our environment. We need to move away from it. Half our corn crop is going to ethanol right now. It's much more efficient to use that land to produce solar energy.
Did you rebuttal or respond to any?
Mandy said we're one of Mid-America's top customers, and I don't think that's true in any way, shape, or form. And part of the reason that's not true is because we have maxed out the amount of solar that we can produce and use ourselves according to the rules of the Iowa Utility Board. We would do more if we could. But almost every building we have is maxed out. All three of the downtown buildings are. The secondary roads and, we've just got a couple remote secondary roads buildings and stuff that are not fully solar. Otherwise, we're using all the solar we possibly can. I'd be shocked if we were in the top 50 customers in Johnson County for Mid-American.
I just want to clarify. I didn't mean the county as an entity. I meant the county, our residents, the...
Oh, well...
Yeah, not the county as an entity.
That I don't know. Mid-America's a pretty big company. They're part of Berkshire Hathaway, and I don't have any idea about that. But I know we are not a big customer of theirs because we're producing all the power we possibly can ourselves.
I would say one thing, come back to the CAFOs conversation, is about, you can vote with your pocketbook, right? When you look at where you're buying your products, your meat products, whatever you choose to eat, as a young kid, I watched a buying station in a small town, in a small-town locker, close up because all the big companies were coming in, right? The big companies are the ones behind all the CAFOs. So don't forget you can vote with your pocketbook. You can buy, if it says something on there that you don't like, whatever brand it is, that big one you see in the meat case, maybe look for the one that's locally sourced. Look for the one that comes from somewhere, like we had great Belvedale Gallows up in Solon, speaking of Solon, and Greg Hippel raises those, and he was supplying them to the salt fork in Solon. I mean, that kind of stuff right there, don't forget you have that power. So.
I do just want to point out that that is a power that is dependent on your pocketbook. Having the ability to vote with your pocketbook is dependent on your pocketbook. Because of our factory farm problem, there are large markups. Well, it's not that the local food isn't marked up. The factory farm food is able to be a lot cheaper because of the way that they produce it, and it's unhealthy, and it's problematic in a lot of ways. But it also does mean not everybody can afford to buy the local steak from a manna that costs twice as much as what's on the high V shelf. So we can't just necessarily leave that up to consumers and residents to pressure companies.
That's why we need to look at regulations and make sure we have an even playing field. You know, you start putting co-ops together or something like that, and allow people that are small to group together that have a voice, you know, and be able to reduce that price through that legislation, through that marketing. It needs to be fair. I agree.
Once again, when you talk about CAFOs and Supervisor Green Douglas spoke about not having the power to do anything, local control had been taken away. So we have to literally go and fight down at the state legislature if you want something done, not us fighting amongst each other, but we need to take it to the state.
The salary of the county supervisor is approximately $90,000. Is that sufficient for you to devote 100% of your working time to the duties of a supervisor and prevent you from needing to take a second job and likely creating extra work for other supervisors?
I guess that's your turn.
Where at, Mandy? I'm currently raising my three children on $55,000 a year from my 40-hour-a-week job. So yes, absolutely, I would be putting at least 40 hours a week into this job with no problem on that salary.
Yep. I make the $90,000, and plus, I've also opened up a restaurant. But I do want to say that the work that I do, you can't even tell me the work that I do in my community. If you're not there to see what I'm doing, you can't say what I'm accountable for. You can't say where I'm at. I don't go into the office and sit 40 hours a week. I don't have to because I'm wanted in the community. I do my work out in the community. I collaborate. I partnership. I'm a part of Think Iowa City, Better Together 2030. I serve on the judicial, six judicial courts. I am everywhere. And when I'm not, when I'm not visible, I can tell you where I am. I've been hearing people say, I'm not at work, and I'm missing work. When I'm missing work, I want you to know that I'm out in Washington, DC in February at state legislative conferences. I serve on the steering committee. I am the vice chair out for NACO, National Association of Counties Officials. And so every February, I go out there, and I am on the policy and steering committee. I serve as vice chair on the community, workforce, and economic development. I also serve as, out there in Washington, DC, on the housing. So all the housing issues here, I go out there and learn, and I'm able to bring it back. So a lot of times, I know that in the community, there has been this question that, it's mainly been aimed at me, Supervisor Porter, and I'm happy to stand here and tell you what I do. I work. I do a lot in this community. I'm called on for everything. Even if somebody die, I don't care, black, white, whatever. They call me, I am there. Absolutely. They know what I do. The proof is in the pudding. Thank you.
Okay, so the question I think was, is that salary enough for us to do our job? Yes, it is. I'll say something that, when I first decided that I was going to throw my hat into the ring and run, I talked to different supervisors, and every one of them told me something different about the job in terms of the number of hours that it required. And I was told by two that it was a full-time, 40-hour-a-week job. And then I was told by the other three that it was three-quarters time. And Rod and I have actually disagreed on this, but I will say this. When we get our paycheck, and it's for two weeks, it says for 60 hours. So that's, you know, instead of 80. So that's three-quarters time. So we are compensated at that. We are able to schedule our time outside of our meetings as we are needed and where we are needed, as Royce Anne pointed out. And so sometimes you come in, and we're not right there. But we're off doing our work. So yes, it's enough. Oh, but I also heard, Mandy, you did say...
Am I up?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
Yeah, I was a social worker before I got this job, so it's plenty of money. But I do want to say, I mean, I've been doing this job for a while, and I have served with a number of people. And everybody has a little bit different way of doing the job. Everybody sees different things that they feel are important, and they kind of do that. And actually, that's why when you have five people, it's a good mix, because hopefully you cover everything in that way. I do think there are, you know, the public needs to ask people what they do, and they need to, and you need to tell people what you think we should do. And basically, you're the decision-makers. You're the people that decide if supervisors are doing the right things or not. So you tell us what you think we ought to be doing, you know? I have kept track of my own time for a while. I did a little time study for a couple months. I always work a little bit over 40 hours a week. That's just how it turns out. I don't think that's excessive. I know a lot of people who work harder than that. I like what I do, so sometimes it doesn't feel like work. Sometimes it feels pretty darn hard. Just depends on what you're up to. But I really feel like the public needs to pay attention and decide if you think we're spending our time and energy in the way that you feel we should spend it.
So accuracy and transparency, and 25, if I read the budget right, it's actually going to go up to $99,000 for the Board of Supervisor. I will tell you, I'm retiring for a reason. I planned on running for Board of Supervisor 20 years ago when I was sitting on the other boards, Real Housing Trust Fund here, and planning a zoning. I had saw then that I had an interest and desire then. So for me, I'm retiring to set myself up to be there full-time, to be there more than full-time. I do other stuff on the side and always have, some other different things, just to make, you know, that advance, to learn something. I'm a 60-hour, at least a week employee, maybe 70. So for me, this is going to be pretty simple. I plan on, I'm kind of old-school, I guess, have you ever heard of a 100-day plan? So I've been talking to other departments in the county. I've been asking, what do you need? What do you not need? I've been getting to understand the county deeper dive now that I'm getting to that point. And with that, I plan on going in every one of those departments, spending time in those departments, seeing what they need and seeing what they don't need. There's obviously different things in those departments that I don't understand unless I'm sitting behind that counter and talking to people and learning and watching and listening and asking questions. So I, honestly, I have no problem for the four years if I get in saying, I don't need a raise all four years. You can give me a reduction. I will still run. If you want to make it $50,000, this isn't about the money for me. This is about serving the people. I have no problem, and you can write this down, 50 grand, I will still do this job. So.
Lisa, do you have a?
Yeah, well, my rebuttal then will go both to Bob and Mandy, because, Mandy, in earlier forum, you said something about you would not take any raise, or you didn't need a raise or something. And Bob, you just said that you would go down to $50, so...
$50,000.
$50,000, yeah, $50,000.
You know what, $50,000, that might be a little cover. Just gas, at least.
You can have your standards, right. But so I would be happy to help you both identify a local nonprofit to give the access to. Just because we're doing a job that we are the ones that are required to vote on salaries, because we have to vote on everyone's salary, but the state code requires us to pull ours out and vote on it separately, doesn't mean that, oh, okay, well, now it's embarrassing, we shouldn't get a raise. And that has happened the last two years where, oh, well, let's do this so that we can tell our, come on, we do the work, and we deserve a cost of living raise, just like all of our employees deserve a cost of living raise. So I've said it. I've said it out loud, and I stand by it. So.
And I'll say, I've been advocating on behalf, I've literally been doing the work of advocating on behalf of mental health, affordable housing, veteran affairs, our youth in the community for over 20 years. And I'm gonna tell you now, I was doing it when I wasn't getting paid. I wasn't getting a dollar. So I'm proud to be getting paid on what I do. I'm still doing what I do. And I did it when I wasn't getting paid. So I'm cool with whatever, however you feel. If you feel that you won't take a raise, I'm happy to get a raise. I'm happy. I was born and raised in the projects of second all Michigan, and if you know where I come from and where I am now, I am very proud. So yes, I'm happy with the salary.
And I want to just kind of put this, because you had put a challenge out recently about tracking our time. And so I actually did that the first year that I was on the board because I was curious, since each supervisor had told me something different, and the compensation board had just recently come up with a plan to bring us up to three-quarters of the pay of the auditor, treasurer, and recorder. And so I thought, well, I wonder, you know, how much time I am putting in. So I tracked it, and I tracked it for the first year. And there were some weeks where it was under 40 hours a week, and there were some weeks where it was over 40 hours a week. But on average, it was 88% time, which is more than the 75% time for which we're compensated. And it's less than 100% time that, you know, some are saying that the job is. And then I did it a few years in, and it was right around 88% again. You have to do it over enough time because you're going to have those weeks. During budget season, oh my gosh, you know, we're there all the time. We may as well just pack up, you know, a cot and sleep at the building. But, you know, and then there are times where it kind of trickles down. But it has been pretty consistent for me to come out to 88% time. But it, it has been pretty consistent for me to come out to 88% time.
You're good? Okay.
I think Roy Sand is the first one for this week.
Okay.
Iowa City and Johnson County residents have had concerns about policing and prosecution policy even before Black Lives Matter and since Black Lives Matter, continuing to this day. Recently, since in that time period, state and local police have used tear gas against protesters in 2020. County Sheriff's Office acquired and continues to keep an MRAP military vehicle. Seven protesters, all transgender, were arrested last fall and charged by the county attorney. The county attorney's office is promoting a community violence intervention program using ARPA funds and there's differing opinions about that program. So taking all of those into consideration, do you approve of these or, or any other policing and prosecution tactics that you can think of? Do you approve of those and if not, are there other policies you would promote as a supervisor?
When you say approve of those, are you talking about the GVI, the Gun Violence Intervention Program?
Whatever you want to pick out.
Absolutely, I'll prove it. I'm part of the reason I asked for it to be on ARPA. First of all, I'd like to let you know that before I became a Johnson County Supervisor, I was a Teamster Organizer. Being that I was a Teamster Organizer before I became Johnson County Supervisor, I knocked doors for people. We went out, we fight for workers' rights or whatever. It doesn't matter who you are. Uh, when we go out to fight, we don't know if you're transgender, we don't know if you're man, female, we don't know, we going out there to fight for our employees and our, our workers' rights. So that is something that I did. With the, you mentioned the protesters. When you, when it comes to protesting, I know as a protester, as an organizer, that disobedience, civil, what is it, civil disobedience. We plan, there's strategic planning to protesting. And I feel like, um, you have to be educated and if you don't know, you don't know. I feel like as a, as a Teamster Organizer, um, with the civil disobedience, we know that if anybody crossed that line, we know it's already set in, in stone, somebody's going to jail. We know this, this is, it's all part of a setup. But with this, that has happened with these transgender protesters, I definitely was not going to go against our county attorney because I didn't feel like she was responsible for what had happened to them. So that's my opinion. I'll come back later with the rebuttal.
Can you tell me what the actual question is again? And you can shake your head, Tom, but you know, you've got this long preamble, so...
And Lisa, I do want to warn you, you've been talking a lot on the rebuttal and I would ask you to make it more, more concise.
Okay.
Do you want me to repeat the whole question?
Just the part that's the question.
Well, do you approve of these or any other policing and prosecution tactics? And if not, what policies would you promote as a supervisor?
Okay, thanks. All right, so the Community Violence Intervention Program or Gun Violence Intervention, I, I do approve of it. I think there are models out there that show that it doesn't in fact reduce gun violence. I think that if you've listened to any of the reports by our, um, our community coordinator for that, you will hear that while there, there's a team that goes out and, and intervenes in a preemptive way, they also do a lot of what ends up being case management. Um, they find out other things. They find out what the context is for people who are considering violence or who have acquired guns and then they, they help connect them. And I, I can't say that that's a bad thing. I think that when we have that mix of, um, and we, we have it in a few areas, but with law enforcement, with kind of a social safety net type mix, that it's, it's beneficial to all. So I approve of that and I would encourage more of those type programs where they're appropriate.
Well, so I'm going to take a little bit different approach on this. Probably a lot of the people in this room, because I know there's a lot of gray hair in this room like mine, remember back some time ago when we had a real tragedy here in Iowa City and, and a, a young man was killed by police officer in his parents' place of business. Very unfortunate incident. I was one of the people back then, and perhaps some of you were as well, who really thought that the police chief at that time needed to go. Well, in city government, that's a pretty tall order because the city manager had said, "Well, no, I'm not going to do anything with it." And the council had kind of decided, the majority of them anyway, had decided they weren't going to do anything with it. Well, you'd have to go through two council cycles to elect enough council members who would then fire a city manager and hire one on the condition that he would fire the police chief. It just wasn't going to happen. I mean, the police chief in Iowa City was essentially untouchable in that situation. And, um, that's, well, that's, is my lead-in to why, that's one of the really good things about county government. The sheriff and the county attorney, if you don't like what they're doing, you can get rid of them. You can get new people in the job. You get to vote on them every four years and I think that's a really good way to do business. So I think you should pay attention to what they're doing and, and absolutely vote in those elections.
So I sit on the Central Committee for the Johnson County Democrats and in my position there, uh, there was a censuring of the county attorney. Just that everybody understands exactly what was going on there is there was a protest. Uh, my understanding, I wasn't there, but the road was being blocked. No one was arrested at that time and Rachel Zimmerman was posed with the question of, "What do we do here?" And, and so she said, you know, "Anybody else that would do that, we would end up having charges against them." So that's what ended up happening. So they came in and they wanted to remove her from office. And by censuring is how I look at that. And maybe I'm over-exaggerating, but that's kind of what was looked at. I voted no for that censuring and the reason I voted no for that censuring was she would be being fair and impartial. I will always support the right to peacefully protest in this county, always support that right. And, and so, you know, she has a job to do. For me to be a Board Supervisor to tell her she's not going to do it anymore, she didn't do it the way I liked, is wrong. And so that's why I stood up for Rachel Zimmerman in that case. And I, you know, I guess I reached out to one of the leaders also in the community that was involved in that protest and, and asked her, I said, "How can we do this together? How can you peacefully protest and law enforcement not get involved?" She still hasn't got back to me on that, but it's a genuine conversation and I'm not going to leave that conversation. I'm going to come back to it. So I, I think there's a way of, of working out that, so.
I want to start by saying when I'm answering safety questions, I am answering them as a domestic violence survivor, as the parent of trans youth and as a person who is finishing a four-year term on the Iowa City Community Police Review Board. And on that four-year term of the Iowa City Community Police Review Board, my next meeting is literally in about two, or my last meeting is about two weeks. I presided as chair over the investigation of the tear gassing. And I watched hours and hours and hours of every angle of body cam and dash cam that was available of that incident over the course of months. I read a hundreds-page report by the IOR, OIR group about that incident. I listened to officers say things like, "Oh, look at that, cool." So I definitely am proud to say that I had a hand in getting the, with, you know, Chief Liston did agree to this change. Um, the code for Iowa City Police Department does now require their duty to intervene extends to other agencies. That was a very complicated situation with a lot of agencies involved. And so now they do, are required to intervene if there's excessive force by another agency.
Other comments?
Yes.
I have rebuttals.
Yes. Um, I would just like to say, uh, if you could remember the downtown shooting, the killing on the Pad Mall, it consists of just, I work with youth in our community and, and it was our black men, uh, young men who did the killing on the Pad Mall. And so now we have a, something called GVI. It's a Community Gun Violence Intervention Program, which partners, we have stakeholders. When I tell you the school, the Iowa City Community School District, we have law enforcement from Iowa City, North Liberty, Corville, Tiffin, everybody. We have parole officers, we got probation officers and we got black men who have went to prison who can literally, what we do is we go, it's preventative. We're trying to stop these things before they happen. So when the police hear anything of our young black men, white men, Mexican, Hispanic, whoever, you know, gang-related, any type of things, going to do something to each other, they get the, they get a notice. Cedar Rapids notified Iowa City, Iowa City notified Cedar Rapids so that we won't have Cedar Rapids coming down here shooting or our kids won't go down to Cedar Rapids shooting. So what I'm involved in, I'm on the committee, I serve on the committee, I'm very happy of this. We are knocking doors. When we hear that somebody is into it with each other, we go, uh, we do, um, we go knock on the doors and we ask to speak to these people and we talk to them and see what it is that they need, how can we stop this in our community? It is brand-new, there is no data, uh, but it's working. It is working, people...
No data for this one?
Yeah, no data because it's only eight months old and we've been trying to prevent from drive-by shootings and shootings on the southeast side of town. We're trying to stop that. So we got men who have been to prison, we got, uh, men who have went to college, black men, going out to talk to these kids. And we're doing preventative measures to stop all that we can do in our community and I'm very proud to be of, I'm very proud to be working with the law enforcement, Rachel Zimmerman, our county attorney, everybody is working together. And I'm gonna tell you, if you don't collaborate, partner and work together, you have to learn to build trust and that's number one.
Further comments?
Yep.
I have a rebuttal. So I'm also on the Central Committee and I was also at that meeting that day regarding the censor. And first I want to say, a censor is just a statement. Neither the Johnson County Central Committee or the Johnson County Board of Supervisors has the ability to remove the county attorney from office. That is an elected position, as Rod said. So, so the censor was just a statement, that's all that that was. And it's not true that that was, that anybody else doing the same thing would have been arrested because there were hundreds of other people doing the same thing that very day. And the only folks who were targeted and arrested from video surveillance after the fact were trans folks. Also, when we talk about how a county attorney does their job, we can look at the Iowa County Attorney prosecutorial standards, which are what define what the county attorney's job is. And those standards very clearly say multiple times that the county attorney has complete discretion. They can know that somebody broke the law and still choose not to charge them because they don't think that the law is just. This is an unconstitutional law that's being enforced in Johnson County.
Okay. I would like to say that fair and impartial means fair and impartial. Um, and I, and I think everybody should be treated fairly. I think they should be treated impartially no matter what. And so I look at what we can do in this county and say, "All this is wrong, let's figure out how we can fix that." I can walk through doors, as being a state trooper for 34 years, I've been a crisis negotiator, I've been a peer support leader, I've done different things in different areas and I understand the need for other resources. It isn't about always arresting somebody. I, as a law enforcement officer, I would love to have resources and for the longest time, I didn't know Guideling Center was there. There wasn't the communication, there wasn't the education that I knew that that was a great resource for us. And so when I look at that, I have the ability to walk through doors that other people don't have the ability and talk to law enforcement and try and figure out that bridge, that gap, build that relationship. I'm going to bring that to the table.
Anyone else?
Am I allowed to say anything?
Yes, just don't talk for two minutes.
Okay. Yeah, because two minutes is a long time. The, the legislation that, um, that created that law, it, it's a horrible law. I would agree with that 100%. And it needs to be challenged. It's been referred to as back the blue. We did try to challenge it at the county level. We got some things that got taken out of it that affected budgets that, you know, said basically if you put the sheriff's office budget at a certain point and if you ever brought it down from that, ever, then for any reason, that you would have all state monies taken away. So the, the pathway we need to go through is going to the state. We need to get rid of the trifecta in Des Moines, number one, but we need to go to the state and get that law taken care of. We need to do whatever we can to challenge it and, yeah, let's do it. It's an entire community.
Any further comments? Okay. The county adopted a FLUM, F-L-U-M, Future Land Use Map as part of the 2018 Land Use Plan. It specifically directs zoning decisions in rural areas of the county with the general goal of directing new residential development into or near adjacent cities. Do you agree with these goals and has that plan, has the FLUM achieved its goals? And are there any changes that you would suggest for the FLUM? And Lisa, you're first.
Okay, you said that it directs development into adjacent cities?
Directing new residential development into or near, uh, adjacent to the cities.
Okay, so, um, yeah, we don't, we, we can't really put anything in the FLUM, as we call it, that would be within cities, but we can do it within those fringe areas. Do I agree with it? You were, you were part of, Tom, the, um, group that was very much against the North Corridor area development. That was created at a time with roads on either side and infrastructure leading up to it and you didn't like that and you pointed out that the residential development should be directed in other places. We were responsive to the community. We were hearing that from people who wanted to build homes. We were hearing it from developers, we were hearing it from engineers. So we looked at the map and looked at development, possible development areas based on current infrastructure proximity to cities, proximity from villages outward, what fringe area agreements were in place. And we created, you know, just like, yes, this is, you know, a good area to develop in. It doesn't mean that it will happen, but it means that if it's not in that like yellow area that we wouldn't consider it at this point in time. But as you know, maps change.
I think the FLUM is a good, um, step in the right direction for us. I think largely the unincorporated land, it really probably the two best uses are protecting the environment where there's environmentally sensitive land and then protecting agricultural land where it exists. So to the extent that we can have less houses just kind of out in the middle of nowhere, that is, is probably better for us as a county. We, I think, have taken some steps toward improving that situation with the Future Land Use Map. It identifies specific places, but it also comes with a matrix and there are several factors that you have to run through. Even if you're in the Future Land Use Map in the area that's considered a growth area, you have to meet so many of these factors before you can be considered for building a house. And so I think that's been a positive, was that a 10-second? Okay. You got to really warn me. So, so I think that's been a positive change and, and we can change the maps in the future if the need is demonstrated.
So is it FLUM or FLW? I, I will tell you, my first order of business...
We always say FLUM.
My first order of business would be to figure out a different acronym. That, that has got to go. It just doesn't even sound good. So we're sitting on planning and zoning and when you look at that, um, I, I enjoyed my time on planning zoning. It was very instrumental to me, it taught me a lot. And, and it taught me a lot because there was different opinions. You know, there was land users that, that they had their property rights. And where does that fall, right? Because everybody has their property and they want to have those rights. And then you look at what's best for the county and the growth. And so I, I'm really comfortable in that environment. And I think when you look at planning and zoning, they play a huge part of that. The Board of Supervisors plays a huge part in that because they need to have the direction. They need to look at what's going to make a difference. When you look at conservation ground, which a lot of you are in here are a part of, that, that group, that plan, ag ground stays close to that. So if we can take densities and keep urban sprawl from happening and put them in certain places, and then unfortunately you have those places like Dubuque Street where you have the Mead Farm, where they cleared every tree off of 43 acres and it makes me sick every time I drive by there. And that was zoned, kind of a fringe area, it was put back into the city limits and so they could do that. You know, there's certain things there that, that the county hands are tied a little bit, you know? You can't get around those kind of things if they want to annex. It's in a fringe area, just like was mentioned earlier. Um, so I think we really need to look at that. The CSR is a big indicator of whether this ground is good for certain things and not certain things. And I, that's always part of it too, but there you go.
I don't have quite as much to say on this one. Um, increasing affordable housing while also ensuring that we are not sprawling and that we're protecting the environment are among my top priorities. So yes, I support the FLUM. I think that it is a good step, um, a good measure to help with those goals.
Yep, and me too, also with the FLUM, I support it as well. Um, I look to our PDS department to the, um... I look to our PDS department to the, because when I came on in 2018, I didn't, I had never heard of it. So I had to learn all about what it was and what it consisted of. And overall, I can just say, we are involved in many sustainability collaborations and partnerships. And our economic development and housing efforts also take into consideration sustainability and equity. So that's something that I depend on our PDS department to help. But with the FLUM, I totally agree with it, yes.
Any further comments?
Yes. So I had mentioned earlier that cities have home rule in terms of annexation. If they come to the county and say, "We're going to annex this," we don't have a say. They have home rule. They get that. And we just go, "Thanks for letting us know." Because that's the way the Iowa Code is written. So that area that, down on Dubuque Street, oh my gosh, that's city of Corleville. And, you know, lots of things were violated that we have in place and that North Liberty and Iowa City have in place. One of them was the removal of soil. So, yeah.
Anyone else? Well, let's move to closing statements. We've got a little bit left time, so if you want to go for 90 seconds, let's do that. And let me see on my paper here, I guess it comes to Rod as first.
Okay, well, I guess I'd like to start by thanking the Hundred Grannies and the Sierra Club for holding this forum. As I mentioned earlier, I've been a Sierra Club member for, I think, 34 years. These are topics that are near and dear to me, and I'm happy to do this forum. I have a couple of things I want to mention specifically regarding environmental stuff that is part of my record. Johnson County, during the time I've been in office, became the first county in Iowa to pass a sensitive areas ordinance. I'm very proud of that. We became the first county in Iowa to exceed the state stormwater ordinance. I'm very proud of that. We passed, I think I referred to these earlier, but we have wind and solar ordinances that are really the model for the Midwest right now. And we have a greenhouse gas reduction plan that we're working on, and I feel very good about that. In addition, we're producing just about as much of our own energy as we can under the current rules for Johnson County. And we've done a lot of good things in terms of saving land with the Conservation Fund in 2008. And I'm very proud to have kind of been the father of that. And I'm even more proud that we're going to give you another chance to vote on one in November. So I hope that that goes well as well. Okay, I just, I thank folks for their past support, and I thank you for your future consideration. I promise never to take the job for granted, and I would respectfully request your vote on or before June 4.
So public services, that my core. So when I look at what I've done, and you should be looking at this kind of like a job interview, right? You should be looking who can do the job the best, who has the qualification, who has the ability, and who you believe is going to serve your interests the best. And so, again, I think it's very important to think that and appreciate being here. So when I look at what I've done as far as in the past, I build relationships, I've negotiated contracts, I'm fine with budgets, I take care of the retirement account for our group, and that's about $700 million. So I understand numbers, and I think that's important to know that. I'm going to look at efficiencies and effectiveness of programs. It may not be popular, but there are some things that I don't feel in this county are sustainable. I think we need to look at things, priorities. Affordable housing is a huge one of that. We can repurpose some buildings, we can get some ground and figure out, there are people that will donate us ground if we do good with it. And building those relationships is what I'm well at. I think priorities to me are based on public input. I think it's very important to reach out and have forums like this, get people on board. You will support what you help to create. It's a simple concept. I think also when you start looking at different things like regional transit systems, you know, when we talk about people that need help, and one of the things they need is transit. A regional transit system, I've been talking to groups already about that and asking, "What stops this?" Well, there really is no great answer. It's just they have their system, Iowa City has theirs, Corleville, seats. We can put this together in the black hole that's in North Liberty. We can fix that. If you have a transmission go out in your car and you can't afford to live in your house, you need to have some kind of public transportation gone plus. It helps with the green effect, right? We can get on a bus, we can get rid of our cars, we leave them in the garage until we go on a trip or something, if you don't have an electric one. So I just think there's lots of things like that. Tax dollars need to be spent in a way you see. And I know the budget's out there, but a lot of people don't see that. So that's why the public input is important. And I'd ask for your vote on June 4 as well, and thank you.
I have a very deep understanding of this community from pretty much every angle. As I said, I have lived here for 20 years, raised children, worked here. I also have run in home childcare business here myself. And I have been organizing, again, with organizations that serve the corridor from across the state for over five years, developing relationships. Those organizations include Sierra Club, Great Plains Action Society, CIC. They contact me to ask me for help when they're organizing things. I'm very closely in contact regularly. I host monthly networking meetings online where we are able to tell each other, "This is what our organization's doing over the next month. This is what we need from the community, this is what we need from other organizations." No five people are going to know everything, no matter who they are. But I have experienced life in this community from multiple angles. I've provided services and I've needed services. I've organized with DVIP, I've been a DVIP client, and I know who does know things. So anytime there's a problem presented to me, if I don't know the answer, I'm going to know who I can reach out to, and I will do that. Thank you. Please vote for me, Mandy Remington, on or before June 4.
As the first African-American to be elected to a county seat, my journey in the public service has been deeply rooted in the commitment to represent the voices and interests of all members of our community. Running for reelection as county supervisor is an extension of the commitment to continue breaking barriers, advocating for equity, and fostering inclusivity in Johnson County. Over my tenure, I've worked tirelessly to address the critical issues such as expanding mental health services, promoting affordable housing, supporting veterans, advocating for workers' rights, and advancing racial equity. My experience, coupled with the unique perspective I bring as an African-American leader, has allowed me to effectively champion policies that benefit our diverse community. Running for reelection is not just about continuing the work we've started, it's about ensuring that the progress we've made is sustained and that the needs of all residents are prioritized. I believe in the power of representation and the importance of having diverse voices at the decision-making table. As the first African-American elected to a county seat, I am committed to paving the way for future generations of leaders from underrepresented communities. By running for reelection, I hope to inspire others to engage in the democratic process and to show that everyone, regardless of background, has a role to play in shaping the future of our community. Thank you for your trust and support as I continue this journey of service and advocacy for the people of Johnson County. Vote for Roy San Porter, on or before June 4, 2024.
Well, you all have just spent an hour and a half of your free time here listening to us. So I thank you very much for that attention and that time. And I thank the Sierra Club and Hundred Grannies for organizing this and giving us this opportunity to talk to voters. I know you all have a decision to make. When you vote, you will have to choose three people among five pretty strong candidates. So I hope you've learned some more. If you haven't learned what you want to know from me, I ask that you visit my website, LGreenDouglas, four S's, forSupervisor.com. Contact me if you have any more questions. I'd like to convince you that one of those three votes should go to me. I have a proven record of voting for progressive issues and supporting the needs of the people in the county and the needs of our employees at the county. And as in the past, I will continue to champion for mental health care options, for strengthening and increasing those and making sure that they're affordable. I'll be a champion for the environment, green standards, resilience, and sustainability, and for working families, for a stronger inclusive economy and jobs, affordable housing, childcare options, and transportation options. So please, give me one of your votes, on or before June 4. Lisa Green Douglas, thank you.
Thank you to the candidates. I'm going to just take 10 seconds to thank the Iowa City Public Library. And a point of personal privilege, I wear hearing aids, and I have for about 10 years. And if you look over there by the piano, there's a sign, T-coil. And I've been able to listen to this forum. It's like the best, highest-quality earbuds you could find. It's just great hearing quality. So anybody out there with hearing aids, I encourage you to use your T-coil. And the Public Library just started this last year. They have it here in Room A and also down in the story room. I haven't tried it out down there, but I hear it's very good. I want to thank our candidates for their time tonight. They have literature on the back tables. And you're certainly welcome to take that. They'll probably hang around and talk to you if you want. And I want to thank Deb Schlorman and the Hundred Grannies. And I'm representing the Iowa City group of the Iowa City Sierra Club. My name's Tom Karzner. And just to recap, the primary election is June 4. There are five candidates. You can vote for up to three. And three candidates will advance to the November election. So an early voting has started at the Health and Human Services Office. My thanks again to the candidates and for you for attending, and let's give them a round of applause.